The Open Public Meetings Act PL 1975, Chapter 231. Adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of Franklin has been provided. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I am the United States of America, to the Republic for peace, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Councilman Chase, Carl Houck.
Here.
Alex Karazi.
Here.
Cecile MacIver. Robert Mettler.
Here.
Here.
Mustafa Mansray.
Yeah.
Charles Brown.
Here.
Robert Thomas.
Here.
Jennifer Ragnow.
Here.
Godwin Amalola. And Chairman Orsini.
Here. First order of business is minutes, first from the regular meeting of September 26th. I will entertain a motion if there are no changes to those minutes.
So moved. Second.
Carl Houck.
Yes.
Alex Karazi.
Yes.
Robert Mettler.
Yes.
Charles Brown.
Yes.
Robert Thomas.
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow.
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini.
Yes. And the second set of minutes is from the regular meeting on October 3rd, 2018.
So moved. Second.
Carl Houck. Robert Mettler.
Yes.
Robert Thomas.
Yes.
Yep, I wasn't here that night. Okay, resolutions, first one, PLN 18-00009, Vadeh Halle Durgin and Falafunmi Odekoya. Motion on that? Yeah. Yeah, I'll move it.
Second.
Carl Houck.
Yes.
Alex Karazi.
Yes.
Charles Brown.
Yes.
Robert Thomas.
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow.
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini.
Yes. And the second resolution we have today is, oh, sorry.
And I'd voted no at that meeting. Yeah, well, I would vote no. Again.
All right, duly noted. So Bridge Acquisitions, PLN 18-00007.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one suggested amendment to the resolution. On page 12, Condition 3, that speaks to the traffic improvements, suggesting that the language, the following sentence be added, "The developer's agreement with the township shall employ a mechanism for determining when the Amazon facility shall be deemed by the township to be fully operational, and the means of reporting and monitoring to be employed necessary to make this determination by the township."
Okay, thank you. Record can note that Councilman Chase has arrived. So I can't move this because I wasn't here that night, so with that amendment, someone else will have to move it.
Carl Houck, can I move, or Robert Mettler, Robert Thomas, that's it? Everybody?
Motion approved. Move to approve.
Who did what now, I'm sorry?
Second.
Bob Thomas moved to approve, Bob Mettler second.
Carl Houck.
Yes.
Robert Mettler.
Yes.
And Robert Thomas.
Yes.
All right, discussion vouchers. Planning Board Attorney Clarkin and Vignolo, November retainer in the amount of $833.37.
Move to approve. Second.
All individually?
Yeah, sure.
Councilman Chase. Carl Houck.
Yes.
Alex Karazi.
Yes.
Robert Mettler.
Yes.
Mustafa Mansray.
Yes.
Charles Brown.
Yes.
Robert Thomas.
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow.
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini.
Yes. Now we move into the public comments section, so this is for public comments unrelated to either of the applications that we are having heard tonight, because those will have their own separate hearings. So any planning matter that is general or related to something not on the agenda tonight, that already has its own hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the meeting be open for any subject which does not have its own separate hearing. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, meeting's open to the public for any comment.
Being no one coming forward, I would move that this public hearing be closed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So we move on to our hearings, the first one tonight, Somerset Properties, PLN 08-00015.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name's Lane Miller, I represent the applicant Somerset Properties. This is an application for development of an approximately 79,725 square foot warehouse building on 415 Western Canal Road, which is Block 517.01, Lot 8.04. This development had previously been approved by this board in 2008 under PLN 08-0015. We are back tonight because the project had not been built, and there was a change in your stream encroachment ordinance, or your stream corridor ordinance in 2016, requiring us to request variances in this application to proceed with the development. We have reviewed the reports of your professionals. As you will hear, we're going to explain some of the comments, but generally, we're going to comply with every one of those comments and recommendations. I would start with our expert, our engineer, Mohammed El Hawat, to provide testimony as to the project depth in general, as well as the nature of the encroachments that are leading to the request for the variance.
Raise your right hand, please. Let me swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you got it.
I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
Mohammed El Hawat, 825 Bloomfield Avenue, Suite 106, Verona, New Jersey, 07044.
Mr. El.
Are you a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
Then you're accepted.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. El Hawat, would you explain the nature of the application, the request for variances to the board?
Yes, the property is about 10.611 acres. It's wooded lot known as Lot 8.04, Block 517.01. The property is located in the M1 Zone, Light Manufacturing, bordered on the east by similar facilities, lots 8.03, 810, 8.11, and 8.12. On the west by Lot 5.01, which is PSENG, bordered on the south by Lot 8.05, and the north by Western Canal Road. The application is for a proposed 79,725 square feet warehouse building, which includes 4,300 square feet of office area. This property, this proposal is exactly the same as it was approved back in 2008, but for the record, the total imperious area is 31.94 versus 60% allowed, total building coverage 17.25 versus 50% allowed, and the total floor area ratio 0.172 versus 0.5. We are proposing 92 parking spaces, 42 would be as a future parking. The total number of loading docks are eight, and basically, that's really the essence of this proposal.
Mr. El Hawat, could you show on the plans, the area of the stream corridor that are going to be encroached?
Probably mark that exhibit as A1.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. If you would mark that as A1. And this is part of the plans?
By the way, this is the same drawing that was submitted to the.
But it is colorized, right?
It is colored, the one I submitted.
Yeah.
What sheet number is it, please?
This is Y3 Dimension Plan.
Thank you.
So the yellow color is the 150-foot corridor buffer from the stream, which is designated here in yellow. The red color is the 50-foot corridor buffer from the 100-year flood zone. So combined together shows the disturbed area within the buffer. And the second sheet, which is grading plan Y4, shows the combined disturbed area of the 100-foot as well as the 50-foot.
And Y4 was also submitted in the application, planned in the package, correct?
That's correct, in color too.
Mark it.
A2.
Please.
Mr. Miller, why he's marking that all your professionals need to sign in on that sheet, Mr. Pressler, yours as well, anybody coming up to the table needs to sign in on the sheet, okay?
We will have that done, thank you. Okay, so Mr. El.
So the total disturbed area is 1.677 acres.
Okay. Now, in the design of the building and the improvements, did you take the stream corridor into account and try to minimize any impact or need for the variances?
Yes, we did. As a matter of fact, we have a retaining wall along the eastern side of the parking lot to minimize any disturbance, further disturbance within the flood plain.
And in connection with the building, if it were to be constructed, well, you've designed and provided testimony with regard to numerous industrial buildings in the past, correct?
Correct.
If this building were designed so that it could comply with the current ordinance without the require for the variance, could you design an industrial building that functioned appropriately for the site?
We could have a building, but it's not really feasible nor functioning, because we'll be a thin, narrow and long building, which is not really something that is known in the industry.
And I think you indicated it'd be approximately 75 feet wide by about 420 feet long?
Approximately, yes.
In order to accommodate the loading docks?
Yes, to push everything away from the buffer.
Have you ever seen a building designed like that?
No, I never seen that.
Now, in terms of the area of disturbance, and just looking at some of the comments that came, you have the comment sheet from the professionals?
Yes, I do.
I'm going to direct your attention first to the Township Planner's comments, Mr. Healy, and in terms of his planning comments, he had indicated as number one, that there had been an attempt to minimize the impact on the stream corridor, and it says, "With the exception of the stormwater outfall." Can you indicate the area of the stormwater outfall on A1, please, or A2?
We have a discharge point right here, which is the shortest distance to the brook, and this is where we're going to discharge all the runoff water from the basin into the stream. At this point, we have filed with the DEP to renew the approval, and the DEP have not finished their review yet, but they indicated that they would like to push this discharge point away from the buffer area, which we are working on at this point. So there could be no need for the GP11, and that could be eliminated, and minimize the disturbances in that buffer area too.
And that was based on your conversations with the DEP since the submissions of the plan and since the last meeting, correct?
Correct.
So you were saying that there may be, well, what did the DEP suggest that they may want to have by way of changes to the proposed detention basin drainage area?
Correct. The original approval, or the original design which was approved by the town and the DEP, was a detention basin. The DEP said, "We would like to change it into infiltration basin to recharge the aquifer." So by doing so, we are looking into revising this detention basin and adding a smaller one in this area to take care of the runoff from this front parking area, and also a little one here to take care of the area that we cannot bring back to the basin because it's too low. Before it goes through the stream, they would like to see some kind of a recharge small basin too. So we have not finalized the design yet, but there will be a smaller one here, total about maybe 1,200 square feet, and a chance that we could eliminate this discharge point.
So if the DEP follows on that current thought, where they require the infiltration basin and the like, it would involve an additional 1,200 feet of disturbance and the possible elimination of the stormwater discharge?
Correct.
Okay. Did you have any other, actually, on item four of the planning comments, there's an indication that the tree replacement calculations would require replacement of 835 trees. Would that be impacted by changes in what the DEP requests?
That could change. The fact that we're going to eliminate the discharge from basin number one into the stream, that could cut down on the number of trees that we're going to replace, but on the front, as the DEP indicated, that they need to see some kind of a recharge or infiltration small basins to take care of the parking lot in the front and the driveway. That could entail into more trees to be eliminated, but we don't know at this point.
That determination would be after the DEP finalizes their recommendations, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Other than that, did you have any comments?
So before, sorry, before we leave that comment, regardless of what that ultimately turns out to be, whether it's less, certainly if it's more, it's pretty clear that you're not going to be able to replace 835 plus-minus trees on site. So you are aware of the tree replacement calculation and the?
That is correct.
Okay. And you're prepared to comply with that?
We will comply with what the requirements are based on the actual number of trees removed. With regard to the other planning comments, we don't have any further comment at this time, correct?
No, we have no problem.
With regard to the CME report, you reviewed those report recommendations?
Yes, I did.
They haven't, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just item number two, the area that we're proposing right now to be 1.677 acres of disturbance.
Yes.
That number could change based on the final DEP approval.
And that's consistent with what you testified to a few moments ago. And you have comments two, four, and seven, all of which could be modified depending on what the DEP actually requires. So for example, comment seven says we have to provide a copy of the general permit number 11.
Right, that could be eliminated.
That may be eliminated if they?
Because the DEP approves.
And if it is not, we'll provide a copy of that permit.
Absolutely.
In terms of comments, two, you covered number two, there may be a greater area of disturbance, and number four, the?
Three and four is basically, we're going to, within that GP11 request from the DEP, we are literally discerning up to the stream. So if that being eliminated, instead of being zero disturbance, it could be 50 feet, 25 feet, depends on what the final outcome from the DEP.
So it would not be a greater area of encroachment? It would be less?
Would be less.
Okay. And finally, with regard to comment number seven, it's a requirement for CAD designs at the time of final plans to be prepared by?
Number six.
Number six, my mistake, by a licensed New Jersey land surveyor.
This should be a very licensed professional engineer, because we designed the building, we have all the CAD file and so forth, the surveyor just do the top one, the outbound. So we will have no problem providing these CAD files.
But we would ask that the board allow it to be your office as opposed to a licensed engineer rather than a licensed surveyor, correct?
Correct.
And in the review of the rest of the reports, I don't believe there were any other?
Just the engineers' report.
Yeah, that was.
Mr. Thomas Zelenik, it's number 16, said that we have now an official address of 415 Western Canal Road. At that time, we didn't have that address, but we have it. Other than that, all satisfied.
Yeah, that was on the prior approval, correct?
Correct.
And other than that, all comments and recommendations we're going to comply with, correct?
Correct. Yes.
I have no further questions to this witness unless the board?
Questions from the board for this witness?
You note that you may be changing the stormwater design based on DEP approval. Have you, and they want infiltration, have you done any test pits out here for, does this?
Yes, we did.
Does the site perk?
Yes. As a matter of fact, it perks, but the DEP wants us to use the absolute minimum, which is 0.5.
0.5.
And that's what it was designed for.
And you're calling for changes to take more trees down up front possibly, with other basins which we don't see right now?
If we end up making the discharge point from the street a little bit bigger to recharge the area, we may be going to cut a few trees.
How many is a few?
Eight, five, six.
And it's true, we're not currently contemplating that, it's just if it's required by the DEP, and we want the board to be aware that that possibility exists, correct?
Correct.
Regarding the water on the property, I just wanted you to know, I don't know if it was a review comment, you're going to be required to put meter pits here. The entries into the property, meaning that this is the type of use it is. Is that in your next?
The demand is really very low, I mean, we usually put it inside the building.
It's more of a question that the locations of the mains and where?
Yeah, we have a loop coming from the main entrance, loop around the building comes back to the fire truck drop off.
Loop it before or after the meter pits? That'll be part of the application you submit to the water?
All right, whatever it is, we'll take care of it.
We will comply with, and we recognize we have to get the Water Department approval.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other comments for this witness, questions?
I think Chair, Member Chase.
Yes.
Ted.
Why is the dumpster located where it is, poised over the slope?
It's on this side of the retain wall. We have a retain wall that hugged the end of the pavement, and that would be the easiest way for the truck to pick it up and leave. So we have it at the end of the pavement.
So as developed, it will not be on a slope there, is that correct?
No, no, it's will be flat. It's right here. This is flat. The retain wall stops by the dumpster, and we have it sitting on a flat grade. And the reason why we have it here, so it'll be easier for the truck to pick it up and leave.
I think it's, looking at your contours, I think it's over the slope, although not as much as I initially thought it was. About the landscaping, you've got Serbian spruce planned all along the street side of the building.
These were requested by the DNR Commission. They need supplemental trees along their buffer, and that's why we put these in. It's not like something we wanted to put in, but the DNR asked us to beef up this area in front of the building to further hide it from the street.
As I think the officers then will be looking out right into these dense evergreen trees.
Exactly.
I think it would be better to rely on the existing vegetation and maybe some more deciduous trees.
Yeah, we didn't really want to put them, but the DNR requested that.
I suppose we're not allowed to override the DNR Canal Commission?
This is their buffer.
It would have to go back presumably to DNR. If DNR required it, I don't know if they conditioned it, but their separate approval, we don't override them.
As your, the architectural plan shows just shrubs in front of the office windows, so that you would look out better from there.
Correct.
But which is supposed to be the official plan, the spruce or the?
The site plan controls.
Mr. El Hawat, would we be able to ask the DNR if they would reconsider, given the board's comments?
Oh, certainly, ask them.
Do you have DNR Canal Commission approval yet?
We have a review letter from them, and it's on hold right now till we get the DEP.
Now, they only formally approve after a planning board approves.
And the county.
All right.
But the reason why we stopped, because if we were to change the design, then the stormwater maintenance manual will change.
So, you know, I think the gist of Dr. Chase's comments are not to cause a great deal of controversy over, you know, that.
Absolutely.
It is just the fact that I think if it looks more natural from the canal, and you probably, rather than having to plant, you just keep what's there naturally, right? Is that kind of where you?
Yeah, it's fairly dense there.
So, yeah, you may want to just say that?
I'm also thinking of what it looks like for the people in the building, above all.
But, yeah, I mean, if the view shed, which is what they're interested in, is natural, they should be happy about that, because that's what they like. Serbian spruce is probably what they would think would be the next best thing if you're taking all the trees out, but if you're not, and you just leave them there as natural vegetation, then they'll probably be more satisfied with that, so.
That would be our preference, and we will certainly approach the DNR Canal Commission about that recommendation from the board.
Okay.
We'll do that.
Anybody else with a comment?
Mr. Chairman, just, so the DNR staff has done a report, correct? And you also have a report from the county.
Yes.
Can you just, are there any comments that they've made that might change the site plan that you're presenting to the board tonight?
No, the county issue is, there is an existing utility pole right in front of the new driveway, right here. We asked this utility pole to be relocated. The county said, "Get us a letter from PSENG that they will do that." And we've been struggling with them for six months, trying to get them and pin them to, finally, we got someone to say, "Yes, we will give you a letter," and they're going to give us an estimate how much it's going to take to relocate them. This is with the county. The DNR, as I said, they're on hold till we get the final approval from the DEP, because that really would impact the stormwater maintenance manual.
Okay.
Depends on what type of detention basin we're going to have. I mean, the original approval, we have a treatment device right before it goes to the basin, one here and one there. If we were to go into infiltration basin, then these two units will not be required. And that's why the stormwater maintenance manual cannot be finalized until we get the final approval from the DEP.
Okay, so the only outside approvals that might materially change your site plan are the ones you described before with base of the DEP comments.
From the DEP.
And that's going to be to remove, possibly remove that outfall?
Yes.
And then can you just briefly describe, because it's somewhat unusual for the board to have a site plan presented to them, and then at the hearing be told, "Oh, we might change this, might change this." So I think it's important that the board just understand the nature of these changes. So can you just briefly summarize again the nature of the changes that you believe may happen?
Currently, we have one detention basin in this area. The DEP asked us to change that into an infiltration basin, which enhances the aquifer recharge.
Does that change the size or shape?
No, it's pretty much the same size.
Okay.
Same size, except the discharge point, since it's an infiltration basin, doesn't have to be that deep. And with that said, the outlet structure outfall is higher than before. With that inverted, I was able to demonstrate to the DEP that we could discharge outside the restricted area, if you will, or the buffer area. That's one change. So this strip will be eliminated, and outlet structure will be on this side and discharging somewhere in here, because it's going to be above the 100-year flood, and that will keep us away from all the buffers. This parking lot here, they want us to eliminate the pipes and see if we could do some kind of a recharge or infiltration little basin in here. It's really small, but they want to cut the curb, eliminate the inlets, and they want to have like natural flow into the new infiltration facility in here. At this point before, or now, we had the treatment device in here, and they said, "We would like to get away with it," and they want to make like a little hole in here with the sand layer at the bottom to enhance the recharge again. And that's actually the whole changes.
Okay, so the amount of green, shall we say, which is the disturbance in the front, is that changing at all?
Over here, no, only this area may change a little bit.
Little, okay, a little bit.
And here, a little bit, and here.
Okay.
This will definitely be eliminated.
Does the overall disturbance change, or is it just a matter of the location?
I think will increase a little bit, yes.
A little bit, but it looks like it's going to be further away from the stream.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And I think, Mr. El Hawat, in the beginning, you said the additional disturbance would be about 1,200 feet.
Plus or minus 1,200.
Thank you. I'll let the record reflect that Godwin Amalola has arrived. Okay. Thanks for that clarification and more pursuing that. So, yeah, I mean, if obviously, if anything? if obviously, if anything material to our decision tonight, you know, you'd come back to us, but.
Yes.
I think if the board is comfortable, the reason I want to explain that is I think what, I'm sure what the applicant would like is that these, these potential changes be incorporated in the resolution. Obviously, if it does, as the chairman just said, if it goes beyond the scope of what the applicant has presented tonight, then they would certainly have to come back to us.
Exactly, and I think as long as we know what the possibilities, what the parameters are, which you've outlined, then, you know, the board is comfortable that you do this plus minus, right? If it exceeded that or changed so that, you know, materially is different, then that's another story, but, yeah.
Your professionals will flag it and will have to come back. But we did want to raise that possibility, because this was something that came up in discussions with the DEP since the plans were submitted.
All right. Any, any other questions for this witness? Not, can move on to your next one.
Thank you. We call Robert Frude, that is our planner.
Raise your right hand. Some we swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out.
Yes, I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
Robert Frude, F as in Frank, R-E-U-D. Professional address is Dynamic Engineering, 1904 Main Street, Lake Como, New Jersey.
And you are a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey?
I am, I'm also a licensed.
Sorry, licensed professional planner is what I meant to say.
Professional planner by examination, yes.
Thank you.
And I testified before this board on previous applications for bridge development as a planner. I've also been accepted as a planner in dozens of municipalities throughout the state.
Okay, thank you. You're accepted here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, Mr. Frude, have you had the opportunity to review this application from a planning perspective?
Yes, I have.
And have you had an opportunity to review the report prepared by the township planner, Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Okay. Can you talk about the variances and the need for them in this particular instance?
Certainly. As the board is aware, and as you heard from our engineer, this is a site that's located in the M1 zone. It meets all of the M1 zoning bulk criteria, setbacks, coverages, things of those nature that are enumerated through the M1 zone. The reason we're here for variance relief this evening is because of ordinance 4157-16, which was adopted in June of 2016 with regard to stream corridor preservation. That ordinance has, primary objective is to protect stream corridors from intensity of development, which would be destructive to this environmental importance. And new applications shall be designed so as to minimize development and maximize the degree practical disturbance within stream corridor preservation areas, and to avoid disturbance within undisturbed areas of stream corridor preservation areas to the maximum degree practical.
Now, you heard the testimony of Mr. Elhawat, that in his opinion, he had designed the building in a way that did in fact minimize that disturbance and encroachment. Would you agree with that assessment?
Yes, I would, and there are five primary objectives that are outlined in the ordinance to look at, or five tests, I should say, that are outlined in the ordinance when evaluating whether or not those conditions are satisfied, and we'll run through those briefly. Item A is proof that it would result in a particular hardship, and that it cannot be located outside the undisturbed area. I think our engineer and the exhibits clearly indicate that this would be a hardship. This is an M1 zone, looking at industrial type uses, and the building that would result, as he indicated, would not be suitable for this type of use. The development has already been designed with building coverages well below the 50% allowable, impervious coverage well below the 60% allowable. So it's already been designed to minimize impacts on the stream corridor and on the surrounding use. The use of walls is also included to help minimize those impacts. Item B is that the applicant, application has been designed to minimize the extent of disturbance within the undisturbed areas through the employment of methods to minimize the amount of tree removal, grading fill within the stream corridor, and employ necessary sedimentation and erosion control measures. As I just indicated, and as the engineer has indicated, this application has been pushed as far to the west as possible, up to the setback line to keep it away from that stream corridor. They've indicated banking of 42 spaces to minimize impervious coverage through that. And also, the construction of retaining wall along the eastern portion will also minimize that. Further, the engineers indicated that there will be the necessary erosion control measures, stormwater management measures as defined by the state DEP, as well as the DRCC, to satisfy that. Item C in the ordinance is that the disturbance to the undisturbed area is eliminated where possible and minimized where not possible by relocating the project or reducing the size of the project. As the engineer indicated, as the plans identify, this project has already been designed, and has been designed to minimize the intensity of the development to a point where it is suitable for this. And that's also noted in the planner's letter, that those efforts have been taken and acknowledged through that. Item D is that temporarily cleared areas of vegetation will be replanted with indigenous, non-invasive vegetation. There's a landscape plan, there's a soil erosion and sediment control plan that's been designed by the engineer that includes detailed plantings that has been done in accordance with the township, the Soil Conservation District, as well as the DRCC standards, as you've heard. And finally, item E is that a condition of any waiver is that submission of proof of permits from the DEP and the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission. As you've heard from the engineer, applications have been filed, the technical aspects are under review, and it's accepted that those approvals would be a condition of the approval. With that, we look at this variance in two aspects. One is a C1 hardship variance. This lot, as you can see by the exhibit, and as our engineer testified, is a very long, narrow lot. It's encumbered along the entire eastern boundary by the stream, the Randolph Brook, the flood hazard area, and then stream corridor buffer, which limits the usable space and the ability to provide a development that's entirely outside of that area. The second aspect of variance that this could be reviewed as would be a C2 or a planning variance, where you look at the positive and negative criteria associated with this. As our engineer indicated, this has been designed, meeting all of the other bulk standards throughout the M1 zone. Any alteration to the development would result in a building and a structure that would not be practical as a industrial use, which is what the M1 zone promotes. We then look at what advancements or what purposes of the municipal land use law may be advanced through this application. There are several that would be advanced through this. Item B is to secure safety from fire, flood, panic, and other natural man-made disasters. The site plan has been designed with structures above the flood elevation and minimizing the impact to those areas. And it also includes, as he indicated, a fire access in addition to the main drive aisle from Weston Canal Road for public safety and fire access. Item C, or purpose C of the municipal land use law is to provide adequate light, air, and open space. When you test this versus the M1 zoning requirements, it does meet all of the bulk setback requirements, and the coverage requirements, as has been indicated, are well below those allowed within the M1 zone. So we are providing adequate light, air, and open space in accordance with the M1 zone standards. And finally, item G is to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, and industrial uses, and open space according to the respective environmental requirements in order to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. In this case, the application meets the goals of the master plan and the zone plan by providing an industrial space within the M1 zone along Weston Canal Road near to 287. So it's an appropriate use in this area. Beyond that, we then look at the negative criteria and how this development might impact the variances that we're seeking. In this case, and as you've heard from engineer, those impacts are being mitigated through the use of walls to limit the encroachment into that area, shifting the site as far west as possible. And the possible elimination of the GP 11 and the outfall to the stream would further mitigate that. And the compliance with the DRCC and NGDP standards through stormwater management measures certainly mitigate any impacts to the stream corridor as well. With that, I think we can conclude, or I can conclude, that the property is zoned for industrial use, and the proposed industrial use is already designed at half of the allowable impervious coverage, less than half the allowable building coverage, and proposes to bank 42 spaces. This use meets the intent of the master plan and zone plan for the M1 zone, and the mitigation provided outweighs the potential impacts for development. And for these reasons, it is my opinion that there would be no substantial detriment to the public good as a result of granting of this variance relief, and that granting the variance relief would not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan or these zone ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Frude. Any questions, the board?
Questions for this witness?
Mr. Frude, with respect to the C2 criteria, we're supposed to engage in a weighing process. Benefits to Franklin Township, not the applicant, versus the detriments, okay? And you have to come to a conclusion. The test is whether or not those benefits substantially outweigh any. And you supplement your testimony to touch on that.
Certainly, the benefits, as I indicated, are we have a property in the M1 zone that Franklin Township contemplates for industrial use. There is a certain size and standard of building that would be required here. So putting a building of this nature into utility within the township would be a substantial benefit for the community. The negatives associated with, in this case, the stream corridor are mitigated through the use of wall construction, appropriate soil erosion measures, and appropriate stormwater management design. So those negatives are certainly mitigated through the design practices from the engineer and through construction, and that the benefits do substantially outweigh any negatives.
Thank you. I just wanted you to put it in the context of the benefits to the community. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Do you have any other witnesses?
We do. We have a traffic expert who can testify. I think it's largely consistent with the prior application, but we did bring him in case the board wanted to hear that testimony.
I don't think we need.
Okay.
I think so. I mean, it's not a high-demand warehouse.
No.
Okay.
And that would be the testimony.
With that, I think we can open the meeting to the public, and if there's any other questions afterwards, everybody's still sworn in, so.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the meeting be open to the public for a hearing on this application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is now open to the public for comment on this application.
Seeing no one coming forward, I would move that this public hearing be closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. If you'd like to make any summation before we make a resolution?
I think the witnesses have presented evidence that shows the application, and the requested variances are appropriate. I ask that the board act accordingly. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other board discussion that we need to have? So I'll entertain a motion on this application.
So move.
Well, it's not.
You asked for a motion.
Right.
No motion approved.
What did you say, go on?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a second.
Second.
Can I introduce some conditions that I think might be appropriate, Mr. Chairman? In the event the DEP approval results in a revision to the site plan deemed by the staff to be material, then the applicant will be required to return.
Understood and agreed.
Second, the meter pits that Carl Hauck referenced, that's also a voluntary condition on the applicant's part?
I think that is addressing what the MUA may require, and whatever they require, we're going to do.
That's what's required.
Okay. Then, yes, we're going to do it.
And revise plans.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for those additions.
Thank you.
Go with that.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Alex Karazi?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
Mustafa Mansray?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
And Chairman Rosini?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. A good evening.
I think you left a piece of paper on the table.
Signing sheet. Don't take that.
Stand right? No, no, no. Where's my sign in? Is that your?
Yeah, he's trying to steal it.
Yeah, that just stays there for the next one.
Take care.
Okay, so our second and last hearing of the night is Samir Shahada and Coco Chen, PLN 180002.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is George Pressler. I am an attorney-at-law of the state of New Jersey with offices in East Brunswick. I represent the applicant. Samir Shahada and his wife, Coco Chen, who are standing to my right at the table. And with me also this evening is our engineer and planner, John Hanson, who will testify and answer any questions regarding your planning and engineering report. Briefly, if I may, by way of an opening, the premises involved is at 48 Booth Street in the township of Franklin. It's also known as Block 176, Lot 1501. And it is in a R7 zone, which requires 7,500 square footage for area footage for the property and a 75-foot frontage. In the event that the application for the minor subdivision is approved, there will be two lots with the approximate width of 66, little bit over 66 feet on each, the front lots. And the total area of the property would be 6,600, as opposed to 75, which is required under the statute. So we have before this board for both variances or dimensional variances for your consideration. That is my very short opening, which I'm happy to say that it is nice and short. And at this time, if the board would accept this, I would like to have our planner and engineer sworn so that he may testify and address the planning and engineering comments.
And you may all have a seat, if you wish, and that would be great. And we swear you in.
Raise your right hand, please. Some we swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out.
Yes, I do.
Name and address.
John Hanson, last name spelled H-A-N-S-E-N, 140 West Main Street, High Bridge, New Jersey.
You've had an opportunity to review.
How about his credentials, George?
Yeah. Yes, thank you. Yes, I, I'm a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey, also a licensed planner by examination. I've been in this business for 25 years, testified before probably 75, 80 different municipal boards.
You're accepted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. John, you've had an opportunity to review the planning report of Mark Healy dated October the 2nd, 2016.
Yes, I have.
And do you have any comments to address the issues that he raises with regard to the four both variances that we're seeking?
Well, why don't I just give a quick little intro of the project? I have a couple exhibits, and then I'll hit on those variances. That's all right, George. I have an aerial exhibit called Exhibit 2. I've marked this as A1, if that's all right?
Yes.
And it's dated 11/6/2018. And what this is, is a, it's an aerial.
And what this is, is a, it's an aerial photo of the site and surrounding area. North is to the top of the page. Somerset Street's off the top here. Our property is highlighted in blue here. And what you see is a property that is developed. It's developed with a home on the north side, gravel driveway that comes in along the north property line, and you'll see a bunch of different structures on the property. The property is, it's fair to say, less than aesthetically pleasing at the moment, surrounded by fencing and since somewhat disrepair. But the more, other important thing to note on this exhibit is that the homes in the surrounding area, all generally of a certain size, the footprint is about 1,000 to 1,200 square feet, and footprint seems pretty consistent throughout the neighborhood. There's a number of different styles of homes. There's craftsmen's, Cape Cod's, bi-levels, but they're all about, you know, the same size and shape. So that's A1. A2... I'll mark A2. Called Exhibit A1. Prepared by you? Prepared by me. Thank you. Dated the 6th. And what we see here is a, this is a copy of the township tax map. North is to the top right of the page. We have Cassuth Street, which our property is fronting on, and that, our property is shown in green here. And what I wanted to do as an exhibit for the board is just to show how our property relates to other properties that happen to be substandard with respect to lot area in the zone. All the properties in this, in this map here are in the R7 zone. The ones that you see in yellow are substandard. Most of them do have property, are developed with a, with a home on them. And what you'll see is that most of these are 50 by 100 lots, so they're 5,000 square foot properties. So less than the 7,500 square foot that's required in the zone. As you get down to the lower part of the page here, these are actually smaller than 5,000 square feet. These are about 3,500 square feet in size. They also have a home developed on them. They're functioning fine. So that's A1 and A2. So what we're, we're planning to do, very simply, is to subdivide the property into two. These are the plans that were submitted with the application, so I won't mark them unless you, you need to. But I'm focusing on Sheet 3 of 5. It's the Site Grading Utility and Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Plan. And so what we're proposing to do is remove all of the existing structures on the property. There's a pool, carport, house in disrepair, et cetera, the sheds, and then subdivide the property into two equal-sized properties. They're both conventional rectangles, similar to the other size of the properties that I had just talked about. They're under the 7,500 square foot requirement, just short of 6,600 and change. Each will be developed with a single-family home. The home would be consistent with the size and the shape as in the neighborhood. This is about 32 by 32 feet would be the footprint of the home, plus a one-car garage in the front. Style of these properties, as I'm told from my conversation with the architect, and I'll, I'll put this up, this, I believe, is also in your packet. I don't know if you need me to mark this. Style is really a transitional colonial, but it, in my mind, is compatible with the other buildings in the neighborhood. I think it works well with the property, and, and it would fit well on these two lots.
Those are the plans submitted by Chris Blake, revised September 10th, is that right?
That's correct.
Those are the plans that were submitted and in your packet.
So, let me just grab my notes. So in preparation of the meeting, I, in this application, not only have been to the site, but have also looked at the surrounding zoning, looked at the municipal land use law and the appropriate case law that surrounds this, and then also took a look at your master plan and the goals and objectives. And these variances, in my opinion, could be granted under a C2 case, as was talked somewhere in the case before us. You know, the C variances could be either hardship or a C2. A C2 is a flexible C-type case. And in that case, the positive criteria is met if one or more purposes of the municipal land use law is advanced, and then, of course, that we show that there's no substantial detriment to the zone plan, the zoning ordinance, or the public good. In this case here, it's my opinion that the general welfare would be advanced, as well as a purpose I, which is a desirable visual environment, and that being, as you would be creating conforming, or not conforming, conventional lots that are consistent and compatible with the surrounding area, which would then allow buildings that are consistent and compatible to be constructed. That, in accordance with the stormwater management that's proposed, the landscaping and buffering that we're proposing in connection with the application, I think promotes a desirable visual environment, as well as also promotes adequate light, air, and open space. Most of the property that's developed now is tucked up against in the north. That will all be removed so that you can have consistent setbacks to the neighboring properties consistent with the R7 zone. So as far as the negative criteria is concerned, I believe there's no substantial detriment. There's always minor detriments with any variance, but certainly nothing substantial in this case. I think the zone plan and the zoning ordinance are not impaired. In fact, I noticed through looking through the master plan that one of the goals and objectives is that existing residential developments be redeveloped with infill properties. And I think that's exactly what, what would be, would be done here. You'd have consistent redevelopment of this property with compatible housing consistent with the neighborhood. So that is my testimony in a nutshell. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, but I think this property and this application is worthy of your approval.
Microphone? Recording secretary needs to hear it. We are also asking for waivers for sidewalk.
Correct.
There are no... Believe that there are no sidewalks in the particular area.
Yes, if we go back to Exhibit A1, you'll see on our side of the street here, which is the western side of Cassuth Street, there's no sidewalks. There's a sidewalk on the other side of the street. So in my opinion, a waiver really would be justified here, since it would be a sidewalk to nowhere.
In your, do you get a chance to read the, the general review comments in the engineer's report? And have you, any, any ones that you can't comply with?
I did review it, Chairman, and I feel that we can comply with any of, and all of these conditions as a condition of any approval the board would give. Same with the planner's report, and I also note that we do have a DNR canal exemption already been issued with the property.
Surprise. People'd be surprised if they have to weigh in. Does the board have any questions for this witness? It's either a planner or engineer, which he is both. Ted, and then Jim.
Why do you need to take down the 30-inch oak? It is not on the footprint of the houses.
No, I'm not sure exactly where that tree is myself. Let me see if I can determine where that is. Happening now, is it a tree in bad, a tree in disrepair?
Is it that, is it that big circle right in the middle? I see a kind of...
That's, that's a pool. It looks like it's the 30-inch oak tree is in this, yeah, in this location here now. I'm not so sure that the symbol that we show on the plan is representative of the canopy of the tree and the root system of the tree. And typically, a 30-inch oak tree is gonna have quite a substantial root system. And so what I think maybe the issue here is that by constructing the new home, the canopy and the root system tree would be in the foundation or in the building walls. That's the reason for the removal of the tree.
Now, I see in, at least in the engineer's report, Note 8 says, "At the time of the building permit application, a final review will be completed on the existing and proposed grading street trees, location of trees to be removed, blah, blah, blah." So essentially, they really haven't looked at this, at the site, I guess, to see, but I know they're gonna require street trees.
Yeah, and we do, and we do propose them on the plan. We propose eight trees. Four, I'm sorry, five of them will be along the street, just off of the right-of-way, and then we have three trees to kind of frame out the rest of the project. Although these are typical dwellings, you know, I think they're generally representative of what would be built here.
That was actually gonna be one of my questions, is commonly, when somebody presents, you know, specific plans for the homes, and there's a lot area and lot frontage variances, both boards typically condition it upon building basically that. And I would say, part of the testimony, part of what you're being presented is, you know, I think that's part of the C2 criteria here that they're, they're presenting. I mean, if they're presenting, I'll just say, ugly boxes, you may not look at it as favorably as something which, in my opinion, I think that architecture was very nice, and I think would add to that neighborhood. And if that's what they're presenting to you, I think that should be a condition of your approval if you're inclined to approve it.
It is, and I'd suggest that, you know, our client would build, or future builder would build something very similar to that, maybe some minor modifications in roofline or materials, but general scope and that transitional colonial that, that we're showing is what we want to build.
And I think that's maybe similar language to the one before, where it's with, if it's similar in scope, and we have had situations, conditions like that, and it is typical when they come in for building permit, there's little changes here and there, but basically it would have to be very similar in character what, to what's being presented to the board.
Well, yeah, and similar to a recent application that we had a few months back, the main thing I would be concerned about is that the size of the house fit the lot and be in character with the neighborhood. The, the funny story in retrospect is that, and an applicant come forward, that added like a spec house, and, and the name of the builder was Monster Houses. So that's strike almost one in two in, in, in one, right? And, and so, you know, I, I believe the board rejected that, and they came back with something a little more in character with the neighborhood. So hopefully, your builder is not Monster Houses, but if they are, should probably choose their, their lower-end model.
Fully noted. Thank you, Chairman.
Your turn.
Thank you. The tax map sheet, which sheet number was that? Just so I can identify it. That was your A2.
Yeah, I don't know that I have the tax map sheet number identified. And we have a, a section of the sheet. It's not the entire sheet with the title drop.
All right.
Let me just see if I have it noted yet. No, unfortunately, we don't.
How far out did you take your analysis from the subject property? 300 feet? Is it 400 feet? Is it more?
It's approximately 300 feet.
Okay, thank you. Does this applicant have the ability to purchase any additional property to make the lots conforming, or at least less non-conforming?
Well, let's take a look at A1. I would say that there's no ability to purchase property to the north with the structures in the location and the driveway in the location that there is. I can't necessarily speak to the property to the south.
Lot size now is 13,365. Lots similarly sized in the neighborhood, or would you characterize this out of character with the niche pattern?
Well, if we go back to A2, the lot directly to the south is of similar size. There are some other size, other lots that are also, I'd say, greater than the minimum, but not as great as, as ours.
Respect to the C2 analysis, can you testify that the benefits to the township substantially outweigh any?
I think the benefits do substantially outweigh the detriments in that by, by creating the subdivision, you're creating lots that are conforming, that create a conforming streetscape. It's a benefit to the traveling public. There's a benefit to the neighboring property owners. I think the obvious detriment could be that either the property sits in the condition that it's in, or that if it's left as a big lot, that you have one giant home constructed that's out of character with the neighborhood. I think that's probably the bigger potential. And if you run the numbers, what you'll find is that you can have a footprint that's conforming with the size of the lot of about 2,600 square feet, which would be about over 5,000 square foot home. That would certainly be out of the character of the neighborhood.
Good, thank you.
I think Mr. Healy raised the question of whether to waive the requirement for sidewalks. I think the aerial shows that the sidewalks are on the other side of the street.
Correct.
We, you know, they, they already mentioned that, and we agreed that, or acknowledged that they are. Any comments from this end of the board?
No.
I think I'm not looking in your direction. All right. Is that the conclusion of your testimony? Because the board has no questions.
I have nothing further.
Okay. Can you use the microphone, please?
I do have the owners of the property here. If the board, any members of the board have any questions, we can have them sworn.
I don't think there's any need for that, but thank you.
Then I have no further witnesses.
At this point in time, I'll entertain a motion to open to the public on this application.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the meeting be open to the public for anyone wishing to question or testify about this application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Meeting is open to the public on this application.
Seeing no one coming forward, I would move that this public, that the public hearing on this application be closed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Since the applicant has concluded their testimony, I'll entertain a motion on, on this application.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion, a motion to approve the, this application. I think it's gonna be improving that area. It's gonna be looking much nicer, and it's in line with the other houses in that area.
Second.
I'd like to add that. Keep backing on what Mr. Healy said. What we see, pretty much, is what we get in terms of the house, house design. Make that part of the motion.
Yeah, so Alex, what Bob is basically asking is, could you just amend your motion to say that, based on the testimony tonight, the, the house that was represented is essentially or substantially what the applicant will construct, and if they choose to construct something substantially different, then, you know, they don't...
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I amend my motion to approve based on what we've seen in this application.
Thank you.
If I could offer just a few suggested conditions, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The applicant preserve the 30-foot oak tree, if possible, and I'm gonna offer this language that the applicant's requirement is to build the same style and size of the home substantially as it was depicted and testified this evening. But then they have to return.
Thank you. Great language.
30, did I say foot? 30-inch diameter, DBH.
Okay. So we did, we did have a second, I think?
Yes, Godwin. Godwin.
Sidewalk waived? Okay? Because it's on the other side of the street.
On the other side of the street, right.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Councilman Chase?
Sorry.
Just have a quick question. In this situation, if we waive the sidewalk, are we collecting a fee?
That's up to the board.
For, to have a sidewalk? Since we're waiving it?
Required, but the, the payment in lieu is, is something that the board may choose to impose. Not in the ordinance of the payment in lieu, but it's a condition that both boards have imposed from time to time.
So we can require payment in lieu of a sidewalk?
So that's an appropriate condition, yes.
I would like to add that, too.
I also feel it's appropriate.
I believe that is appropriate. Thanks for bringing it up.
You'd be offer of the motion to first say yes. All right, I guess I'll make another amendment. All right, I guess I'll make another amendment. Okay.
All right.
Payment in lieu of sidewalk, right?
Okay, so we have, we have, we have a motion now that includes everything, I think.
Okay. Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Alex Karazi?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
Mustafa Mansray?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini.
Yes. Good luck. Okay, so we don't, we don't have anything else tonight? It doesn't look like. When's our next meeting? Is it after Thanksgiving or before? December 6? Okay. I guess we'll adjourn till then.
Yes, sir, that's fine. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Oh, no.
All in favor?
What did?
He said we.
December 6.
Six.
Okay. Bye. Mr. [inaudible].